Okay, so I'll call the meeting to order and we'll start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, any correspondence?
No.
No? All right, so then we can consider the approval of the special meeting minutes from May 6th.
So...
It's approved?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
Nope, here, I'll second their motion if that's good.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Obstand.
Okay.
Because I missed it.
So is Joan Bradley on or?
No.
She's still physically coming, right?
I talked to her earlier today.
Yeah, I just want to make sure we're not losing her in Neverland.
Yep.
Do you have a chair down there for her?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Lots of them, so.
We were thinking Alice, you could stand.
Probably. Might be more comfortable than anyone.
Yeah.
But this is for West. Um, okay, well, um, ended to start with, um, asking Dan, we have any update from the fire commission that was, there was going to be a meeting?
No, we've never actually had a meeting about.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Um, so if that's the case, we'll just kind of go on. Would anyone like to bring up any, anything that came up during the public hearing or, um, or the special meeting? We had, I know during, um, we just stayed with the fire commission. One issue was the, um, definition of active member of the fire department and I guess the fire department has a, a definition which has to do with the number of fire calls they go on and that entitles them to, you know, on, uh, to get the tax I guess credit for property taxes.
That's basically what you guys are doing is getting up for taxes.
Yep. So could we use that as the definition?
No. Of what activists? Whether somebody's active or the department, yeah, we certainly could. And you know, the other thing is, I mean, it's, um, I mean, we, we didn't have a chance to have that meeting, no matter how many more these meetings are going to have.
Hope was tonight was right.
Yeah, well, then the, the question is, do you want to even worry about bringing it into the charter at this minute if you guys don't? Good, because right now, the, the fire commission, we can, um, we can change the ordinance and we can do whatever we want that way. I mean, I think going, putting it in the charter is a better thing, but you know, the chief brought up some things too with respect to whether or not, you know, if we have a, uh, whether it's an appointed fire commission, whether it's selected commission, we don't know what that does in statute. Right? For instance, if it's, if it's, if we have a fire commission, nothing in statute differentiates whether it's elected board or a, uh, appointed board with respect to its powers by the state. So I think we might want to we might want to look into that further.
We could. I mean, I, I have some thoughts as to, and kind of at the same page, right now, there's a board of fire commission that exists today.
Right.
This exercise was really only to codify it and make certain changes because there is, are some changes. The only other changes I see is the makeup and, and some reference to the duties, but the ordinance creates the board of fire commission that's dictated by Connecticut statute. Ordinance creates fire departments as well as board of fire commission and the ordinance itself limits the powers, uh, to that of what the board of selectmen will prescribe as an advisory board. Um, so the board of fire commission exists as we sit here today. We're whether you want to bring it into the charter or, or not.
Yeah, we could, well, part of it was to make those changes and, and this is, I'll tell you kind of the mindset was the fire commission itself is an advisory board, doesn't work if it's all fire. We've been very honest about that. You know, we, we can get plenty of advice from chiefs and tenants and folks like you, you have deputy chiefs about that, like what we need for the first selectman, but we wanted a tax kind of like a tax watch board. There are people who are civilians who are watching, who are brought into the fire department as commissioners and are advocating for you to make it easier because of the volume of information it takes to worry about the fire departments. That's kind of the point.
Yeah, I always thought it was a common sense taxpayer advisory board that would oversee what's going on and, and be there to support the fire department, right? It was never a negative thing, you know, but the fact that, I, I think the testimony from the fire department was it should be all firemen. But then why have that board of an oversight committee if in fact it's the fire department anyway? It just seemed, it just didn't make sense after listening to everybody. I thought it was supposed to be a good thing and advocate for the fire department with what they thought as common sense taxpayer it needed to you, Alice.
The, the idea, as I understood it, was the concern that I, I know I personally have as I look at the development in Stony Hill. You look at firefighters that are family members, fully jobs, going to their own meetings, going to all those calls. There's a volume of building going on out there. The idea behind it, from my understanding, was just to give them a citizens board for help. Because the pure volume of, of work that needs to be done, even if it's just, I mean, even if it's assigned by the fire department itself. I, I, the details were less important to me than looking at the volume of building going up in town with two volunteer fire departments to lend them a hand.
Get them help, yeah.
Right. And that's really where it was coming from, from my perspective. I had a talk with Tommy about it and his, basically his, and I'm not, I don't want to speak for him, but from what I understood him to say is the definitional side of the needed work. And I think that goes back to what Nick just said. The definitional side of what's a member of the fire department. What we wanted to do was get people who were interested or people like Rich Code that lived here but didn't necessarily serve here. You know, to get firefighters or people that had retired that wanted to serve in that way, not, not knowledgeable people, but people that weren't so busy doing all of the work that it takes to run an active fire department. And that's kind of where it was coming from. It wasn't coming from usurping any authority or knowledge. It, it wasn't designed at all to be that way. It was to take the load off of already busy people that are volunteering to save our lives. I mean.
To the chair, your question?
Yes.
Um, I understand what everybody's saying here today, but I see that there's contention between the fire department and town hall administration over this issue. We can all agree, I believe, that the ordinance that was put in place, that was even questionable in the manner it was done. So, starting with that and the fact that this commission, the fire department has expressed that they don't like the makeup of the manner at which the, the fire commission has been created and what it represents and their voice in that process. So what I would ask again, and I would love it if you can get your calendars out, that you, uh, that you, uh, Dan, if you could meet with the fire department in the next week, see and hash this out so we have a harmonious agreement. Or we have a situation where we just agree to disagree, but everybody knows that. Because right now, I think there, it, it, it's up in the air and I think if we pass it as it is, they're not going to be happy. They're a big representative of this community and I think that it's, you know, worthy of further discussion. Uh, just going to leave it at that. I would like to see a more harmonious environment going on here. And I can clearly see from the people that I've talked to in town, firemen and, and citizens, that that's not the case. I mean, we know we have disagreements between the fire departments as well. So I would just ask, you know, one more time, that let's see if we can get level-headed people together and come up with an agreement. And Dan, you come to us and say, here, we have a deal. This is how we want to move forward.
So that's why if, if the chair pleases, you mentioned that we want to wrap this up.
Right.
So I don't, I don't necessarily think that we need to move forward with putting in the charter right now because we can do this through ordinance. We have plenty of time to sit down and figure out what it's going to be through ordinance and, and change the makeup of what it's going to be. Uh, there's a lot of other concerns, like I think, you know, deputy chief, uh, Brendan Ryan was mentioning that he's worried about being over heavy-handed or over too much oversight, right? So instead of just putting this, we're still going to have to go back and define this with the ordinance anyway. Because, because what we do is if we put it in the charter, that only, that only describes the structure of what it will be, right? And we backed off from, the only thing we've said is whether it's active firemen or not active firemen, that if that's something we want to still find out, I say we just hold back from putting in the charter and we handle it through the ordinance and then in four, five years from now, five years from now probably, we'll take another look at.
I agree because there's so many, I'm sorry.
Okay, go ahead.
No, I'm just going to say I agree with you both because there are just so many questions left and it would take a while. And we don't want everybody to be unhappy, not feel good about the makeup because once it's there, that's going to be there for another five years. So maybe it's best to not put it in the charter now. By ordinance and.
But does that, but then comes to the question that are they happy with the ordinance in which it is right now?
And I think.
That has nothing to do with us.
No, no, no.
The ordinance has nothing to do with us.
It's part of my process, part of my thought process, that if, if we don't, and it's part of my process whether we keep it in the charter or not, so that's, that's where I'm leading with this. If they are absolutely unhappy with the, the way the ordinance is right now, then, you know, kicking the can and saying, well, we're going to try in the next couple of months, but if it doesn't work, well, we'll address it in five years. I don't know if that's necessarily the answer either.
Say what I was saying so you understand exactly what I'm saying. So, no matter what the ordinance has to be changed. Because what this body decides is to put it in the charter, on the charter, it's only a structure of the board. How many members, what kind of general big picture power, that's appointed or elected.
Right.
The, the big picture, right? All the other duties of that board all come down to the ordinance no matter what. The duty, like the real duties that we've talked about, whether it's financial oversight or whatever, that, that's all prescribed in the ordinance.
Right.
So if, if we're worried about that part of it, all this stuff we could do with the ordinance, we could even redo how we do membership in the ordinance if we want. It can be done.
So Alice.
Following up on that and also what you just said, my understanding is the ordinance itself is the part that's heavy-handed. And that the ordinance itself is imperfect because it, it, that I think is the corner of this discussion where there is too much acrimony, lack of understanding, it's not clear, it's very heavy-handed. I think if you just say that there is a fire commission, the balance of appointed, you know, you know, the, the minority representation and all of that stuff. We can get into, and the membership is referred to as ordinance and we can look into that and change the ordinance underneath it. Are we legally allowed to do that? If it refers, if we change it and discuss the membership requirements, can we, do we, must we do it in the charter or should we do it? Should we refer to the ordinance that we can then change later?
No, so the way this works is the creation of both a fire department and a board of fire says commissioners and we have called the board of fire commission, um, is created already in statute right now by ordinance. So the ordinance comes first in, in that instance. You can always revise an ordinance. That's, that's much easier to do than a chart. Um, and consistent with other boards and commissions, we generally codify them in the charter and are very generic and broad-based as to their powers and, and duties. I think doing otherwise would be inconsistent with what we've done in the.
Because my concern is that and my concern is that it's over-regulated. It doesn't leave the freedom of movement that you need to have. It's designed to be advisory and it's designed to assist an existing body, two bodies really. Um, it's not designed to be regulatory, it's advisory only. So if they need help with getting whatever, they can have the fire commission do that legwork for them or help them do whatever, do research or whatever. I just, it should not preclude people who have fought fires, just people who are actively serving right now. Because of the workload, if nothing else. The intention was to supplement them, not to have another thing for them to serve on. And also the way we wrote it, the two captains, the two chiefs were on it anyway.
But they're ex officio, they're ex officio members.
That's a voice.
Absolutely.
By the way, I would refer that way. The chief should not be on it ex officio in any manner. I keep saying it's over, over again. The chiefs have no business.
Or they're appointees.
An appointee from each fire department, yes. Because the chiefs need to be at every meeting or should be. Or they're deputies, should be at every meeting no matter what. Because the chiefs are actually interactively involved with the board and the conversation in every meeting. Because they're like, they're like the staff of the board, so they're.
The chief or their appointees, the language I would use.
But, but, um, it could be appointee, it could be designated from the department, the department can figure out how they want to do it. Whether the chief appoints or whether the department elects, that should be up to the department, right? And I wouldn't want to spell that out necessarily, say the chief's appointee or that the department can elect them. However you guys want to come up with somebody, you should have a, an ex officio member on the board, period. But not necessarily voting members who are active members. That's not what, that's not what the advisory board is for. It's for advisory and it needs to be a taxpayer oversight, but have enough information about how the department works. And that means the chiefs need to be there and part of it at every meeting, just like the police mission. And you also need people who are ex officio on the board in addition to the chiefs. So that gives you what, four members or more in the room because you're supposed to be part of it.
Well, advisory means you can say no. I mean, it's not, it's not legislative and it's not designed to have any vote or legislation. It's designed to come up with materials to help you. That's all it's designed to do.
It's designed to advocate like fire trucks, right?
You need people at your public hearings, send them, send the, send that group. I mean, you, you got more people as a part of working with you.
Yeah.
And that's, it's really a citizenry that we need to engage the community in the fire departments and that's what this was designed to bridge for you. You can have somebody just do all of your social media for you. I don't care what you use it for. It's not designed to be a substitute for decision-making within the fire departments.
Would someone like to make a motion to, uh, eliminate seven dash six from our recommendations?
I can't, I gotta know which one we're talking about.
Well, we're talking about the fire commission.
Taking it completely out of the, just the charter discussion.
Yeah, we're, we're trying to get it back to the charter.
Make that motion.
Well, you don't have, but it's, um.
I, I would like to see.
You know, that's the recommendation.
I would like to see a meeting in the next couple of weeks. That's what I would like to see.
This is our last meeting.
I don't know what to say. I just think this is a really important issue.
It's, you know, it's, I think it makes sense to postpone because you really want to have an ad hoc border commission, something that's created by ordinance to be up and running for quite a few years before you put it in the ordinance, I mean, before you put it in the charter. Let it kind of prove itself. And the fire commission has been around, what, four years? So really don't have a, a lot of time with that.
We've been going around the circle a lot. And my suggestion would be kind of a combination. Key, what is now C seven dash six, Board of Fire Commission. A, the Board of Selectmen shall appoint a Board of Fire Commission, period. And B, as it says, here are the powers and the duties. Confirmed or imposed, yada, yada, yada by ordinance. That gives, that gives the, um, the imprimatur, I guess that's how you pronounce it, of a legitimate fire commission. But it also gives enough wiggle room and enough leeway to what is that going to look like that's not here? Um, because I, I think we've been circling this for a while now. I mean, I remember when it first came up, I think it was, you know, um, in December or something like that.
It's been a while.
And we were really talking about it, um, I don't know the history. Um, I'm not, I don't see the problem with saying there is a Board of Fire Commission and the commission shall do, 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 do. And then as things progress, the, the two houses get together with the Board of Selectmen and they hash this out and it doesn't have to be done right now. But I think to, to, to just completely knock this out, I think does, I think it does it to service to the fire departments and quite frankly, to the charter.
Excuse me, so you're saying then, um, clarify that you would say by ord, it's recognized by ordinance? And, and then just leave the language.
Exactly.
Very brief.
So the membership language can be hashed out.
The membership's language can be worked on.
Yeah, it wouldn't even be in the charter, you're saying?
The language itself?
The membership language would not be in the charter. Just say by ordinance.
I think, yes.
But that it is appointed.
It is appointed.
In an advisory capacity.
And now we, and now like.
Just to recognize that it's in existence.
Yeah, exactly. Exactly.
To the chair, would it be totally inappropriate to ask the, the chief to make a brief comment?
This is a special meeting.
No, this is a special meeting, so just, we don't, we don't need additional penalties at this point, it's. So what's?
Just trying to.
Why don't you kind of go around the table and just see, you know, John, where are you on this?
I guess I'm on the fence. I guess Penny's recommendation, just acknowledging that there's a fire commission with not a lot of teeth in the charter, but the charter will be finally recognizing it. I'd be okay with that. And, and just saying that this board is appointed by the first selectman at this time. And then the ordinance, if they work on that in a year, well, then that would trump the charter anyway, so let's.
I agree with that. I think that sounds like a.
I wish I had a dollar for it because Joan agreed to that.
Did you have two dollars?
So. I've known Joan a long time.
Yeah.
I am agreeing.
And.
Um, I think I've said a lot on the topic. My goal and wish here is that there is harmony, cooperation, future. Uh, we have a lot of changes going on here in this town, in this community. We're growing leaps and bounds. And I would just hate at the end of the day here to see contention between the two fire departments and management. How will we get to a point where we can track, retain all of those good things that go along with a fire department? I really, it makes no difference to me. I'm just sitting here on the edge of my seat thinking that, been around the block a few times and I know that, you know, unless it's penciled in, it probably won't happen and you know, I would hope that if it, we, we do just, you know, pass it through like everybody's suggesting here and it's done in ordinance, that that meeting is not delayed and that both parties come to the table ready to deal and ready to put the cards on the table and at the end of the day, have a full mind that, hey, we all got to work together here. And, uh, you know, that, that's my hope. Because I hate, I would really hate to see a situation where fire department EMS are at odds with the town, the selectmen, and we ended up, we end up having appointees on a fire commission that are political. That's, this is too much of an important issue for that to happen. So, that's all I got.
Hey, I'm sort of like John, which doesn't usually happen.
Thank you, no doubt.
I'm obsessed with this.
Alice, look at your turn.
I think, I don't know, this is a tough one. I think it's the best idea to have everything worked out to everybody's, I mean, no one's going to agree on a hundred percent on everything, but basically something that everybody can really spit about before it goes in charter. So my first thought is leave it out right now, but then I think Penny has a point where you hate to not see the Board of Fire Commission. It's not in the charter anywhere. Now I have my draft here, but it's not in the last, last.
No.
No.
It didn't exist.
That's why, right. So, so because of that then, I guess I think that there should be some basic mention, just basic language in charter and then work it out from the ordinance.
Penny, any second bites of the apple? No? Alice?
No, but I think the Messiah may be coming.
I know what you're saying.
I will, the Messiah may be coming. People are agreeing with each other.
I'll throw one, one rat in. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I agree with you. There's only one thing that I would, I'd like to see in the language is, um, you know, we're talking about it being appointed, we're talking about, you know, the membership, about it referring to the ordinance and that's where the membership can get dialed out. But, um, I would really strongly suggest that the word advisory is in there because it's really not designed to have the kind of teeth that I think a lot of people are worried about. And I don't blame them on that score because if you get a bunch of citizens in there that don't know what they're, what they're doing, it causes harm. I mean, Tommy coming to me and saying, you know, for you all to mention member, you don't, it's in a vacuum because we have different categories of member. And I said, well, that's exactly why we need to have this discussion. Because those kinds of discussions clarify it for us and we just, you know, but I think enabling it in the charter um, is something that I think we need to do. So those three things of a yes, um, appointed and advisory only. Are my, those are my yeses.
All right, look, the only, the only thing I was going to mention was to throw a huge wrench into the whole thing is one of the things that we've talked about.
Well, there goes my idea.
Is whether or not we should be combining EMS and fire someday. Think if we ever decided to do that by ordinance and in five years we wanted to change charter again, could we still do that? I mean, because if we ever did do a combined EMS fire type of.
It's combined, then it comes under fire.
Then we wouldn't have a fire commission anymore.
Clearly, I thought it was through the selectman, the EMS, you, you guys.
Right now, it's, yeah, we have EMS commission, we have a fire commission.
Oh.
There's been talks about doing both together. I, I'm not saying that we're doing that, but.
It's two very different roles.
Well, they're still managed by the same groups.
I don't, I don't know if that pigeonholes.
We're not pigeonholed, right? We can still.
Uh, the ordinance now, does the ordinance mention EMS at all?
No.
No, no, not that ordinance. We have a separate EMS commission in the charter. But I guess if we ever wanted to combine them, we can probably do that by ordinance and say it's serving the function of both in the charter. And a, and a.
Charter would just catch up.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay, that's better. I'd be good with that.
Uh, so then looking at what we had proposed, the Board of Selectmen shall appoint in accordance with the provisions of this charter, a Board of Fire Commission consisting of five voting members. We're then deleting each of whom shall not serve the town of Bethel as a current firefighter.
Correct.
But continuing, each of whom shall serve a four-year term. Then we're leaving out additionally, the Board of Selectmen shall appoint non-voting ex officio members to represent each fire department within the town, so leaving that out. The five voting commission members shall serve overlapping terms. And then we're then deleting the next sentence which deals with the ex officio members also having four-year terms.
So you're saying are we, are you just leaving just everything after the Board of Selectmen shall appoint in accordance with provisions of this charter, a Board of Fire Commission, period?
And no, because then it goes on, uh, each of whom shall serve a four-year term.
So you're going to define terms, but you're not going to define who to be in those terms.
Right.
Right.
Because that's, that's what's in, well, actually, the ordinance, one of the problems, as you know, with the ordinance was it had no defining terms.
Actually, our, our ordinance does, I believe, right?
With the revised one or?
Yeah, the ordinance, I think it's good.
It does.
Sustainable Bethel didn't have any terms.
Okay, yeah.
We have in our current ordinance, membership terms of our, our office, thirteen, three. The commission, commission shall comprise of five voting members, voting electors, one being a member of the Board of Selectmen. And five voting members subject to minority representation. All members of the fire commission shall be appointed.
Remember the Board of Selectmen?
No, not greater than four years.
No greater than four years.
Yes.
That's interesting.
So, a member of the Board of Selectmen and the chief or it's designate are two that are ex officio? And then plus five?
Yeah.
They're talking about the ordinance.
No, yeah, this is the ordinance.
That's the ordinance.
There's, there's four at-large members and one member of the Board of Select.
And one problem we have. And one problem we have. The charter currently says that members of the board of selectmen cannot serve on any other board. Except as specified in the town charter. And so this ordinance put someone on this commission. And that violated the charter. So.
That's one of the, we've got some cleanup. So that's one of the reasons I want to put it over in the charter because it cleans it up.
Well, does, so yes or no to the board of selectmen member for this commission?
I would no, we don't want that. Yeah. We have to come back to, we have to come back to the ordinance and change it.
Just asking, you know.
Yeah, and, and by not putting it in here, then the ordinance must be changed. Because right now the ordinance is.
Either way, the ordinance has to change eventually.
Yeah.
Um. Yeah. I just know there seems to be a, a lot of issues with getting into the charter now. I'm just trying to like. Say, all right, we, we can set that, you to put it in there like you said and just, hey, you shall establish a board of fire commission, you shall appoint.
Can you read it in entirety, you know?
Okay, without, okay. The board of selectmen shall appoint in accordance with the provisions of this charter. A board of fire commission consisting of five voting members, each of whom shall serve a four-year term. The five voting commission members shall serve overlapping terms. Okay, so they're four-year terms and they're overlapping. Um, and then there's paragraph B, and I don't know whether we need to change this at all. The commission shall have the powers and duties. As are now or may hereafter be conferred or imposed upon said commission by the Connecticut general statutes. Any special act or by ordinance, and that should be just by ordinance.
Yeah, by ordinance or by order of selectmen, because order of selectmen is the only one.
Right.
Okay, so, so take the statutes. So we're taking out the general statutes.
Special, a special act.
So.
Only, only by ordinance.
So let me, let me just throw, what, what, again, if you, if you determine the numbers of folks on this board in the charter. And you determine that it's a four-year term. You've just limited us from putting ex officio members on it.
Right, because I don't think so.
Because, yeah, because the charter, if, if.
Out of ex officio members?
Yeah, the charter only, correctly, the charter only outweighs ordinance if it's, if it's with the structure of it. You can't turn around and do an ordinance that's against the charter, kind of like you just said about.
And we would need some flexibility.
So the police, yeah.
About put some, some, uh, language in there. It says there's, there may be ex officio, you know. It's defined by the ordinance.
Nick, how do you add ex officio members to this language?
You, you have it before in the ordinance or you put some language that keeps it broad enough to.
I think your only choice is you basically say the board of selectmen shall appoint a board of fire in accordance with the charter. Um, and the duties are. Basically by ordinance, like whatever that language, that's, that's it because anything else you do would take away the ability for the board.
Yeah, so for example, the police commission, you've got, yeah. The police chief attends all meetings, but he's not ex officio member.
No, but, but the police chief runs the meeting, he almost runs it.
Yeah.
I mean, well, I should say that, the, the chair runs the meeting.
Right.
But the police, the chief of police is kind of like staff. It, it, it works that way in a lot of legislative bodies, that the staff of a department is kind of there and is part of the meeting.
Right.
Planning and zoning is a great example, right? Inlet dwellings is a great example. Same thing at state agencies and. The police commission is run that way. And then the chief of police is there for every meeting or ever. If something happens, but that person is involved. That's the way the board of fire should run. The chief, the chiefs can sit at the table. They shouldn't be sitting in there because they have an active role. Don't have a vote, it's not their role to vote, but it's their, their job to give information. And you can put ex officio members on if that's very important to the departments, which. If the chiefs are there and the, and the board of fire is doing their job, they don't need ex officio members. That's why there's not an ex officio member on the PD. But there's just been this big thing about ex officio members and they're worried about the power and this and that. It's not the way it's supposed to work.
Ex officio members don't vote.
They don't vote, no.
If they're in, if, if, if they're needed for an advisory capacity, yeah.
Is it if they're needed or are they an active participant within?
No, well, the, the fire commission chair should be involving the chiefs. That's the role. That's what's supposed to happen. And so I, I know we're, we're trying to make a fundamental change in the way that happened, but remember the, the way this thing kind of came out. It's the fire board that was kind of adversarial and the way it was designed and all that. That's the drama. I don't. I don't think there's an adversarial way to the town. We're just trying to get along, right?
I just. But I, I think we're fine here with this language because every time it talks about five members, it says five voting members. So adding ex officio would not violate.
Yeah, I don't know. That's a weird question. You know, because you're saying the, you're saying the board of fire is five voting members.
You're not mentioning that.
You're not mentioning ex officio. I see where you're going, Tim, but.
Yeah.
I don't think that gives us a leeway to add.
So and the five voting members shall serve overlapping terms. It's, it's silent on ex officio members.
Right, and if it's silent, then it opens the door.
Wait, is it silent on ex officio members anywhere else in the charter?
Police commission, doesn't, you don't have ex officio members.
No, but I meant where we have them, but it's not mentioned.
Well, we don't have.
I don't think we have any.
We don't have many. We, we, we have a couple.
Do we have any that aren't mentioned in the charter?
Well, we do in public site and building. Has non-voting members.
On a project, on a project basis.
It's in the charter.
So I don't think we ought to set precedent by having it not be in the charter.
Right.
Just say five voting members plus two ex officio, you know, two ex officio, you know.
Members may be appointed or.
You may back to the.
Maybe.
Now do the whole thing again, which is okay, but.
Yeah, but you got, you got to put it in the charter.
No, no, I'm with you. I understand. I'm.
Because it's enabling.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. And the only place that, that's unique, and even then it talks about it's like insurance and pension. Insurance pension gets somebody from the board of education and from somewhere else. It's a shallow point, ex officio members, but they're all mentioned somewhere in the charter, every ex officio.
So however we want to mention that.
Yeah.
Um. And then the aspect of the membership is mentioned in the ordinance. You know, one from each department, the chief or his designated.
So if you add that ex officio language in there, but kept it broad because. Who knows, in a year or two, we might have three departments. We might have. We may have eight departments. I mean, we don't know when it's coming. So are you saying that you'd like to add back the?
Well, we, we, we make it simple, take, the, the thing that's controversial, I think, with everybody is whether it's active or inactive firemen. Right? So leave it, leave it broad, leave it up to the board of selectmen to determine what kind of advice they want. Right? If they want to, if they want to put firemen all on it, fine. If they don't want to put firemen, then don't.
You mean a selected.
It's a selected one, well, firemen, then fine, because if you, if you want to establish it, then you say. It's established, it's five members with two ex officio and the rest can be done in charter.
Yeah.
And when we created this commission, you initially didn't want any firefighters and you decided. And all by yourself and said, I rethought that and I don't think.
Why didn't start this commission?
Was that?
I didn't start the commission.
No, I'm sorry, this, the charter.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
When you, when you charged us, looking at it, you initially said, I don't want any firemen on here. And then you said, well, wait a minute, what if we have a thirty-year retired fireman from Norwalk? And he thought his expertise would be excellent. You changed your mind and said, I want the, I'm sorry. The selectmen should have the ability to decide if there's a great candidate.
Well, I shouldn't be deciding for future select.
Right.
This charter is supposedly broad.
And you, and that's exactly what you said.
Yeah, and that's why.
True, sir.
That's Penny. Penny.
So I just did a quick search of the charter. The only time ex officio appears is here. In the board of fire commission suggested language.
And, and, and that's proposed language, that's not in, that's not in the charter.
Right, it, it's nowhere else.
Right, sure, so.
I just did a search of ex officio.
So I.
In the charter.
I've just looked at her, public site in the building, but Pat had something to say.
My, my only comment to that, I think it's important to have some mention of an ex officio member in there. Um, and, and also the ability, so we make sure that we have. Professionals, people that have institutional knowledge about this topic. Other than, let's just say, a political appointee, because a fireman knows what a fireman knows. And if you've got a seasoned guy who's had a career in, you know. Public fire. Um, and EMS, I think those experiences are invaluable. I think you, it's really important to have some people on there. Um, maybe, maybe they're not voting, maybe, you know, comes down to, you know, some of these very strenuous budget issues. But having someone with the institutional knowledge about the profession, I couldn't imagine a fire commission without that. I think that's crazy. So. So they, I, I think we need an element in there to ensure that those type of people can serve on this commission.
So I, I've looked up, so I've, I've looked up the, um, public site and building commission. We thought there was ex officio, there isn't. Um, it says that the board of selectmen may appoint up to two temporary members. To repri, represent the interests of a user of a specific project of said mission. Like school projects, it's, it's firing range and all that. Um, and in that case, the temporary members are given a vote.
Look up insurance and pension.
Yeah, it's, it's in, it's in two places.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There it is.
Yeah.
Um, actually, Nick, this might be a, an opportunity for some, um, hyphens. Because in some places it says X dash officio.
Wow, I see.
And this place it says X officio.
Oh, yeah. No, it's two words, but not a dash. Think in the dictionary.
Um, and, and, um, and N dash. Or whatever it's called, anyway, but, um.
Okay.
New commission.
Oh, it's like, you can wish it hassle. Yep. Yeah, that's kind of new. Oh, we did it one more time, yeah.
Insurance and pension has two. Talks about ex officio members and eligibility for the office. And the first selectman shall be an ex officio member of all boards, commissions and committees. And then there are also some references to ex officio members in statute.
So Nick, what do you think we need to do with regard, if we? Do we need to give some? I guess enabling legislature, uh, language here for having the ex officio members?
I think if you don't mention them, it, there's an argument that you're locked into what's said and specifically stated in the charter. Um, because the charter would trump. The ordinance.
So let's see.
So. If you wanted to give some recognition and you were settled on, I, I mean, I think Dan said before. But the only controversial thing really in that C seven, six, A. Was shall not serve the town of Bethel as a current firefighter and each of whom, well, it's out there. Shall not serve the town of Bethel as a current firefighter. Took that out of A. And left the rest of the language and massaged B. So that the commission shall have the powers and duties as described, prescribed by ordinance. And that's the ordinance detail. That, that allows, you have some, I mean, we, we've kind of middle hybrid ground here. We've. Given some parameters in terms of numbers and ex officio members. And still keep, I, I can take a gash out of ex officio as well. Um, this does leave open that it just talks about, it doesn't say two ex officio members, and remember I said that purposely.
Right.
Um. Because it would have an ex officio member for each fire department. So if one were eliminated, if two were added, you would still be able to have an ex officio member for all of us.
So then all we would need to do is delete the language, each of whom shall not. Serve the town of Bethel as a current firefighter and. Eliminate that and everything else stands.
It's something, I, I think we probably should change B too.
And a bit, right?
Yeah.
And B, we're simply eliminating the reference to Connecticut general statutes and special acts.
Yeah, and just say ordinance.
By ordinance, right.
Sounds reasonable.
So Tim, somebody brought up, Dan, for instance, that the first selectman. Is one of the ex officio members on the board of fire commission. I think that that is, I think it's a moot point. Because somewhere in here, I just, you know, went glancing through. The first selectman is ex officio on all of the boards.
So.
And commissions.
Just going to say on the fire, board of fire itself, they put a selectman on it. Currently it's reached straight.
No, but what I'm saying is that select, a selectman.
Is already.
It's, it's.
First selectman is ex officio, not, not the board of selectmen. So if you have a member in the board.
No, that's what I'm, that's what I'm saying, that it already exists that selectmen. What are ex officio? I mean, you used to come to every planning.
First one, just the first one.
Just the first one.
But if he wanted to set Richie to this.
I should put, I can delegate any of my duties.
Right. My charter, okay, so it wouldn't matter.
I don't, well, actually, that's a good question. I mean.
No, I think first.
I don't kind of delegate my.
Ex officio membership.
You can't because ex officio is my position.
Right.
Absolutely.
Right, can't delegate.
First one, so, so any member of the board of selectmen might be the.
Yes, yeah, well, the, 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 the thing on the fire board was they put, I don't know why they put a selectman on it. I don't understand. That wasn't my call. There's no reason to have, have a selectman on it when the first selectman's automatically, you should have another person there, regular voting member who. Is a part of person in town and not the member of the board.
Particularly as advisory.
Exactly, we're advising the board, so like you take two cuts at the apple, you know, it's a weird thing, like, because I wouldn't have a vote on the board either. Richie does. The way it stands now.
You, the way it stands in the charter, you could still show up and just sort of be part of the row.
Yeah, yes.
You know.
Yeah, but, but right now Richie has a vote. And so you're, in a way, it's kind of silly, it's, it's an advisory board of, advisory to the board of selectmen, but yet one of the selectmen has a vote. It's very strange. Um, so I, that's something I believe down the line in ordinance, we're going, we're going to try to eliminate, that's crazy.
Well, again.
Well, then why?
It conflicts with the current charter.
So then leave it out.
Leave B out?
Yeah, we wouldn't put it in the, the selector, you just put five numbers.
So the ex officio, forget it.
No, 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 no.
We're still, we're still putting that in.
Yeah.
But we're not, we're not.
The member of the board of selectmen is only in the ordinance, it's not in the charter and I don't think anyone's saying. We're not defining that a selectman shall serve, one of the selectmen shall serve. Correct, right?
Yeah.
I think we're in a good direction. Eliminate in B, it's only going to say ordinance.
Right.
We're going to eliminate all of that.
Well, you said board of selectmen ordinance, right?
It's the.
No.
The board of selectmen is the only, is the body who promulgates.
Right.
So I, I think it's, you can go either one.
Yeah, so we're eliminating in B, Connecticut general statutes and special acts.
Right.
And what you read earlier, it seems like it developed very broad. So ordinance can define the detail.
The, and then, so in the first one, the only thing we're eliminating. Is each of whom shall not serve the town of Bethel as a current firefighter and. And then the rest would stay, so it's continue on saying each of whom shall serve a four-year term. Additionally, the board of selectmen shall appoint a non-voting ex officio member to represent each. Fire department within the town.
I know it's difficult, but could you read it from the top?
Okay.
What we're calling.
Board of selectmen shall appoint in accordance with the provision of this charter. A board of fire commission consisting of five voting members, each of whom shall serve a four-year term. Additionally, the board of selectmen shall appoint. A non-voting ex officio member to represent each fire department within the town. The five voting commission members shall serve overlapping terms. The ex officio members shall serve a term of four years, subject to reappointment by board select.
So where does it say that it's advisory only, or do we?
Well, that's what, I thought that's the definition of. Oh, you're talking about the.
The board of. The board itself is advisory. Itself is advisory, it's not legislative.
It's currently explicitly in the ordinance as such, so it's not going to change until.
So I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, no, I mean, we can add, you can add it.
I think it's important that it's there. It's in the charter advisor.
And it's a an advisory board of fire commission, if it's some kind of adjective.
Nick, a question for you that if we put that, I mean, let's say we want to confer some sort of power on the board to do certain things. Can we still do that, even if it's advisory? Because really, the advisory nature is just is defined by the ordinance and what the powers are.
It it would limit your, if you did want to change that and confer powers, because again, that's.
Is advisory to two fire departments that have the power to do what they need to do? This is designed to be advisory to the two or three or four.
Well, I think it's invited to the board of select.
This this commission is advisor to the board of select. Because this comes up with like equipment and all the different things, like if you have an educated group of people who.
But no one votes to buy a truck.
Yes, they do, but that is.
They vote to recommend.
They vote to recommend.
They don't actually have legislative power, and that's what I want to see a word or two.
But that's what they do, they vote to recommend something. And that way, they've done all the due diligence, they've been educated, they're making the best possible call, and they advise.
But it still is in a in an advisory capacity, that I want to make sure there's something in here that says that.
I have a quick question to that point. My my concern here, and I really have no idea of the answer, but it comes into my mind based upon the last meeting, what was said, that, you know, a a board of fire commissioners has some statutory authority, responsibility. If we say advisory, does that confer to take away or add, or does it cause confusion to what the duties and responsibilities are of the chief? From a statutory standpoint? You know where I'm going, you see, you see where?
Yeah, but I think you're mixing apples and oranges.
Yeah, but I I don't know if, you know, the word, I I like the I like the idea of advisory. Because really, that's what it is, right? You're you're making advisory, you're you're getting all the information from all the people, and you're presenting it to the board of finance and board of selectmen here, and we are the common voice of these two agencies, this is what we're presenting, really, that's what it comes down to, right? So. As long as we don't get ourselves into trouble with, you know, the the powers and duties of a of a fire chief, and what the responsibilities are with that word.
That's the reason I say advisory.
Okay, gotcha.
Because there's no T's.
Here.
All the way that you're worried about.
All boards, appointed boards and commissions are advisory, right, by by their very nature. And if you go up to the beginning of appointed boards and commissions, I mean, I don't think you're going to find in any of these, you get appointed, the word advisory, but it does say, and this goes to all appointed boards, the board of selectmen made by ordinance create, abolish, or consolidate such appointed boards and or commissions, and they will likewise alter their powers and duties and change the numbers in terms of their members. Basically, the board of selectmen has power to do whatever they want with any of the appointed boards and commissions by five. That's in the charter itself. I don't know if you need the board of advisors, because the board of selectmen can unless you want to always keep it as advisory and never change, never change it.
The reason that I got.
For a revision.
But the reason I got stuck on that word is I wanted to send a message to the fire departments that it's not designed to usurp what they do or take over or impose government where where it doesn't belong. It's designed to pull citizens together to help them. So I just, I I was more concerned about the tone, if you think it's already reflected in the charter, then I deal.
I think it is, and and the only, the only reason I would, and I I don't have a vote, but say against putting advisory in in case the board of selectmen wanted to confer some actual power upon it, they have the ability to do so, but if we put it as purely advisory in the charter, then that would take away the board of selectmen's ability to do so, except by changing the charter, which is a five year process.
I'll telegraph my hand. The the master evil plan.
Right.
One of the things that departments have been asking a lot for is for admin help. And I've been, you know, you know, we've talked about like paid administration, all sorts of stuff. It may be one of these things that down the line, you have an ad an actual position that works because we'll say Tommy, and gives them admin support, both departments, with all the other things they need, whether it's tracking medical equipment, purchasing, like whatever that may be, right? That person would also staff the board of fire. So maybe there's there's something I want to give them that is like over the admin or something someday, like I I don't know that yet. So I'm just trying not to tie my hands, I think, in the future by saying, you know, in the charter.
To that point, that came true loudly and clearly at the public, certainly here in the last time, very, very clearly.
I think that might be a good way to go. For the departments, and I'm working that, we have some steps to take to get there, but I'm.
Sounds very rational.
So from that standpoint, that person would likely, I would likely be the one staffing that committee or the commission as well. So I just want to make sure that the board of fire, then I can give them something that they do. Delegate something to them, and if, you know, they're all they're advisory by nature, I just don't know if I would put it in the charter and have somebody say, oh, you can't have them do that.
I just wanted to cover it somewhere.
So as long as it is, it's fine. Yeah. It's actually very helpful, because it's like think through all the possibilities.
Yeah, if I could just clarify that point, are you saying like in in that, you know, scenario you created, are you saying that someone, you know, obviously it's a volunteer position on this board of fire commission, that that person would be volunteering to do their administrative duties?
I'm talking about paid staff from a big town.
That would, who would that person answer to in your scenario?
Right now, it would answer either to Tommy Galloway or directly to me. Right, I mean, over how we do it, because we'd have to figure out what the chiefs are, you know what I mean, so that way they can, like, carry the admin support. But we haven't even got there yet, we could.
I hear you, I just.
What that is, but.
I don't want to get lost in the sauce.
Both departments have, that's the one thing that constantly they've been asking for, because if you look at how difficult it is these days with all the mandates and things coming, that's the one thing I want to give them. You know, and imagine that person would staff the fire commission down the road.
And that'll probably come through next year's budget process.
Or or the board of finance would, if they voted to do it this year, it's possible, but we're talking about it. And we're going to have some health savings, I hope.
So are you saying with the word advisory, that may cause an issue, or?
I'm asking Nick that question because I'm not the attorney.
We're saying it's the word advisory kind of is specific, and it and that would have the ability to take on a non-advisory function if it was in the chart. That makes sense.
So, Nick, have you kind of captured the changes already?
I I have, I've done some highlighting.
So would someone like to make the motion to revise C seven dash six A and B?
I saw. Tim, I thought we had a motion on the table already. No, no, I thought we had a a motion and a second. No, no, he was just getting consensus. Okay, right.
So I made the motion.
Okay, Eddie made the motion.
No, I made the motion.
I second.
Okay.
As stated, as the the motion is the language that you've read in.
You want, yes. But I don't want to read one word.
The last time.
I think I've been a four or five times.
But you did it in entirety last time.
Always go back to the team.
That's it. Okay, any other comments, questions, all in favor? Opposed, abstained? Thank you.
We can't believe it's quarter to nine.
Yeah.
No way.
I gave you guys an hour.
You gotta be kidding me, no, it's eight o'clock. It's like that.
Okay, there there was some talk, I I guess it was Matt Nickerbocker's comment about the annual town meeting. Right now, and opposed by the by the previous Charter Revision Commission, that the annual town meeting would take place during any of the first fourteen days of April. And he.
Well, my my understanding, it was moved to the first fourteen days because now the presidential primary, it moved up. So that's what puts everything in a bind, because you have to, well, you know better than anybody, you have to sequester the machines after the primary, but it may not leave us enough time.
It becomes a presidential year problem, so it doesn't mean that every year we're going to have our annual town meeting on the fourteenth day.
Correct, but we could we could extend it if we have to, that's that's what happened the last time during presidential primary.
Any other questions about that?
Can I can I just connect to that? It says that it shall be held on one of the first fourteen days. Yeah, I'm I'm not understanding.
Of April.
Of April, right. How does the presidential primary?
So would not affect that, so. If the presidential primary is April first.
Right.
We have a tabular, they get locked down for two weeks, that means, how can we hold our referendum if at the same time we're in a lockdown period?
Right, except wouldn't that fly in the face of what the charter is saying? Which is that it has to be within fourteen days.
No, the charter, the charter currently says within seven days, you're looking at the.
No, I'm I'm saying, I'm I'm seeing it, shall be held on one of the first fourteen days of April.
Right.
But.
Should change.
If the the town meeting, it's.
Town meeting is adjourned to a referendum, which would be later, it has to be ten days later.
It's like fourteen days later or something, so again, it it has to do with the movement, presidential.
Town meeting, not the vote here.
Thank you, understood, got it, okay, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay.
By the way, Mr. Chairman, I did I did speak with Matt Nickerbocker about that afterwards, he totally got it, oh, yeah, he's his primary, remembered.
Yeah, yeah, beginning of. Certainly a problem, and it was something that the legislature did, we used to be, we used to have it much later in April.
Oh, yeah.
And then the state legislature said, let's make Connecticut relevant, well, this time around, the decisions were already made by the parties.
Aren't you glad when you look at all those other towns that are voting, there's there's one, New Milford's still voting.
Yeah.
Well, but the problem is, when you do it early, you don't get real numbers, health savings, there's a lot of numbers that come in. The state doesn't do their budget and allocate the money, there's a lot of reasons that you want to do it like in Fairfield and New Milford, but.
I know.
Matt Nickerbocker made a comment about C eight dash fourteen about the Public Utility Commission, and said we better check into the Water Pollution Control Authority, have you looked into that?
We have broad language in there that. General statutes, so. I think you have flexibility that you need.
All right. The. Yeah, we had a couple of people who didn't like sustainable Bethel. One of the things I thought interesting about the comments about supporting sustainable Bethel was that we need to protect our ocean, control oil disposal, and need to do composting. Sustainable Bethel does none of those things, but that's okay.
We we're trying to get them involved in the composting.
After it's already.
It's a good start.
So. So anything, and then and then for the four year board of selectmen term, we had four people against it, Billy Michael, Brad Colts, Phil Gallagher, and Richie Straighton. And then in favor, we had Matt Nickerbocker, Tony Ravino, Bruce Cornwell, and Janaye West. So any? Any change of heart there?
Who wants to start?
Put it on the ballot, yeah.
We have put it on the ballot over and over and over again, you know, I thought that the testimony from the four people that thought that we shouldn't change it, they had great reasons, you know, Phil Gallagher, I could not believe his mind in the history of what he had, you know, the history of of a of a first selectman in a two year term, you know, I would ask this commission to reconsider what they made a mo, who made the motion and reconsider it and revote, because I I just think it's important, it's relevant for vote getters, the ballot, for for a bunch of reasons, you know, and I know I've said it, we give the President of the United States four years to come up with a foreign policy, but we're going to argue that a first selectman at Bethel needs four years because he's got to learn a job, I just don't think it holds water.
Well, I think the discussion is far greater than just that. But.
I I firmly believe that a selectman needs more than two years, especially a new one. Because you're just learning, you're just learning the job, you have to make difficult decisions throughout that process, and you don't always want to be weighing your decision on the votes.
And you want to be able to get in there and get the work done, once you feel comfortable, you have to start on day one anyway, but you want to be able to get in there, have some time to do the work and accomplish some of the things that.
And no disrespect to Mr. Gallagher, but when he was a selectman, things were a lot simpler than they are now, they are very complex, they're very involved. There's cycles, just purchasing cycles that far exceed anything that he could ever imagine.
But Rich Rich Strayton was against the four year term as well, and he's a current slacker, and has been for many, many years.
I just, I I just know my government experience that two years goes like lightning, and you have to make a lot of tough decisions as a selectman, and I think you need that time, and it shouldn't always be gauged upon self-preservation, which I'm not saying it always is, but you you know, that's one of the first things.
And you have to campaign.
You have to campaign, you know, it's it's like, it's a cycle, I think four years is appropriate.
So based on what I heard at that last, at the the public hearing, I think the four most dangerous words in the English language are never in the history. And or more words, we, yeah, because we've never done that before. And was with true, I mean, I just sat there. My mouth like was wide open with Bill Gallagher, I mean, like, wow, that man has forgotten more than I will ever know. Things are different, this is a different position from the way it was, it's different from the way it was five years ago, even before we went into COVID. I just, I don't, I don't think it's fair to ask the selectman to come in. It's different from being the president, the president, with any luck, has had governmental experience, has, you know, had has gone through all of these things, again, with any luck. That's usually not, that's not necessarily true of a selectman of a town like Bethel. It's it's brand new, it's all new material, I'm amazed at how much the selectman has to do quickly and get on board. So. I I would leave it as four years.
Well, there's there's two things that have always helped me determine how I felt about this, and it's gone way back, is that every other single board town is four year term. That's one, but the other is when you look at the Connecticut Conference of Municipalities, and they Connecticut Conference of Municipalities, and they have stats on all the other CEOs at towns, the majority of them all have four year terms, I mean, it, Matt was an outlier of when he used to go to these meetings, you are now too, I mean, most of, most of the the chief elected officials of towns, be they first selectmen or mayors, are four year terms, I mean, it just, it takes time to get your to know the players, to to find out, I mean, it doesn't mean you don't know how it works, some people don't. I mean, we've had first selectmen here, they did not know anything about government when they were elected, and it the town pays for it. And so it's important for us to allow some continuity, and I think one of the things that we did discuss is this is a step toward considering a town manager, if we get too large for elective volunteers and elected you know, smaller elective government to handle all of the work that needs to be done. So I'm still a very frustrated.
So, so it really appears following the public hearing, no, no minds have been changed. So right, Joan, did you want to say anything? We're, we kind of skipped over you.
Well, you know, I've given this a great deal of thought and I certainly have talked to more people. And I was impressed by some of the comments at the public hearing. And, you know, especially a person like, um, a sitting selectman saying that he would continue with the two-year. And then, uh, Phil Gallagher's history of people who've been elected four, five, six times, I guess. So you know, um, it's a hard decision. I think when I talk to people outside the commission and all, they don't really want to change. They want to stay with two years. Uh, there's always the thought that somebody will be there who won't be acceptable. Um, there's that fear, I guess. I don't know how reasonable it is, but it's there. So, and, and there's a history of having this voted down.
In 2014.
Was it, I got to ask.
And how about before that?
Or was it on its own?
No, each question was on its own.
What is on its own? No, no, no. It was, it was a combined four-year term and a five-person.
Right.
Yeah.
In one question. So I got it. I got it. Like, that's been, that's been brought up over, it's not, it's not been voted on on its own.
That's also 11 years ago. And the changes that this town has gone through on volunteers is a lot. I'm sorry. I don't mean to interrupt you because you're
Sorry, Mr. Chairman.
But this commission also decided not to bring it forward to the first selectman when we've met the last charter revision.
I don't know about the last charter.
So I'm saying.
So let's bring it back to Joan.
Yeah.
Joan.
Yes. So, you know, I'm going through my thought process and I think what you're asking me now, uh, I voted for the four and you're asking me if I'm changing my mind. But I, you know, I don't think everybody voted. Uh, Pat wasn't here, right?
Not present.
So I don't know what you do about that. What would I do now? Did I change my mind back to, to four? Uh, I think I'd probably have a tendency to stay with, uh, my thinking of four, uh, because I think the town is changing. Um, I'd like to, you know, put it before the people and let them decide it, that, you know, totally. Uh, give them that opportunity. If they refuse the four, then we know where their thinking is. Um, to me, the four seems reasonable.
Plus I think it opens up your candidates because you're going to get a certain kind of candidate that's going to disrupt his life for a potential two-year job. I mean, I, I know if I was ever thinking of doing that, I'd be very concerned about my future based on two years versus four years, especially a progressive person with business knowledge and member of the community. It's, it's, it's two years. You could end up with just retired people that want something else to do, you know? I, I, I don't know. Today's day and age, the way things are, I think people want security and I think a four-year buys a better candidate.
All right. So again, it doesn't look like anyone has changed their mind on this issue. So I don't see any reason to have a revote unless someone wants to make the motion, but at this point, um, I think we're, we're, we would be set and ready to go forward to the, uh, forward this to the first selectman and the board for their consideration. Is there anything else that?
We had a letter from Melanie.
Oh, you're right. Right. You're right. We got the
So we need to deal with
Yes, let's deal with that. Thank you very much. But by the way, that, that vote in 2014 was 42% yes or 58% no.
Oh.
Um, here, I got it. So
Want me to make copies?
See you in April 26th.
All right. So, um, everyone received this and I do have an extra copy if someone So it had to do with the eligibility for office, C two dash five eligibility for office regarding the restriction of no employee may serve on any town agency, board, or commission if such agency or board or commission exercises direct supervision or has responsibility for direct supervision over the employee, nor may any town employee serve on a board of finance, planning and zoning commission, zoning board of appeals, or inland wetland commission, except, uh, as an ex officio member as a result of membership on the board of select. Okay, so then she cites, um, Connecticut general statutes, section eight dash 19. It says the chief executive officer of the municipality and the engineer thereof, or commissioner of public works, if any, shall also be members of the commission that's regarding planning and zoning without voting privileges. So her suggestion is to make a a change to section C dash two five. So, um, so Nick, you, you, you have this letter?
I do.
Oh, you do?
I'm looking at it.
So so while Nick is, is looking, I'll just take a look. I'll just say, this is what she's proposing. No employee of the town may serve on any town agency, board, or commission if such agency, board, or commission exercises direct supervision or has responsibility for direct supervision over the employee. Nor, uh, no town employee may serve on the board of finance, zoning board of appeals, or inland wetland commission, except in an ex officio member as a result of membership on the board of select. Nor may any town employee serve on planning and zoning commission, except as authorized ex officio non-voting member as per Connecticut general statutes.
Is that your motion?
No, well, it's, so what do you think, Nick? Is that, I, that's sort of a trick or?
Yeah. I mean, I was presented this, um, kind of after our last meeting, but, uh, after or before the public hearing. So I proposed to Melanie that we deal with this as correspondence post-public hearing. But I'm in agreement with her and actually discussed
Right.
language.
And, and actually I received this prior to the public hearing. So at the public hearing, I recognized that she had received it. And then, so we're, we're kind of dealing with it that way.
Yeah. Yeah. This was, this came in as part of the public hearing. That's just how we dealt with it. I think it's just, um, an instance where it's consistency with something stated in Connecticut general statutes. Um, I would note that eight dash 19 does cover planning commission. Um, I don't know if it's it's a little unclear because we have combined planning and zoning commission in Bethel rather than a separate planning commission and a zoning commission. Whether or not, I mean, it doesn't matter for the first select. First selectman by our charter is ex officio member of every board and commission. Um, but there are other employees that would be ex officio members consistent with eight dash 19. And there could be an argument that that only applies to the planning arm of the combined planning and zoning. I just note that kind of for the record, but I'm in agreement with
Right. There's so many municipalities that have separate planning boards and zoning boards.
Yes.
So
Just got a question. Wha, what would be a conflict for someone who's, say their highway worker, you know, highway business low level, from what would be the conflict if they wanted to be on the zoning out? Where's the conflict exist?
There's, there is, no.
Has to have direct supervision.
No, no, but then this is separate. This is, so Connecticut general statutes allow town employees to serve on land use boards unless the charter restricts it. So we restricted it years ago. And it really came after, I mean, the background to it was Tim Burke was our Parks and Recreation Director. And he was elected to be a selectman. And the moment he became a selectman, we said, oh, he's got to step down as Parks and Recreation Director because of our charter. And then Marty Lawler pulled out this, um, Connecticut general statute that said, no, we cannot prevent uh, town employees from serving on appointed or elected boards. So anyway, that's, that's where that came from. And so it's in the charter now and Melanie pointed out this issue and so what do you recommend we do at this point, Nick? Just leave it alone at this point or?
No, I, I I'm not a voting member, but I think it's a, it's a change that's just consistent with Connecticut general statutes. I have no, no issue with it.
Oh, okay.
So insert it.
Well then, so would someone like to make the motion to make the change to, I want to, let's see.
C dash, C two dash.
Two five B.
So move.
Okay, a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed or abstained? Thank you, Joan, for reminding us.
We have one more item on the table.
So from my vantage point, we have two revisions. Unless there's anything else.
That's it. So then
We almost revised the four-year term. We almost did.
We discussed other things. All right. Well then, uh, I think that, I mean, we also talked about the annual town meeting. We made the changes. Um, all right. Well, I, I guess that's it. We won't. The next time we'll, we'll be canceling future meetings one by one until we hear back from the board of selectmen.
So we're not going to meet next week on June 4th?
No.
Nothing personal.
Nope.
We're all on the therapy with you.
We're all welcome to come to St. Louis for
Nice.
Depends on what you're doing there.
Okay. So we'll do that. We'll, um, so Nick and I are working on a transmittal. We'll go send it on to the board of selectmen. When do you meet next?
Um, next Tuesday. So I don't feel they're ready for that one to be on the agenda, but
Yeah, I think I need to, you could transfer, technically goes to the town clerk and then the town clerk, I'll double check the stats.
Yeah. Good. I think you're right.
Town clerk, board of the, on to the board of selectmen.
And then I think we have a public hearing.
You have to schedule a public hearing.
Great. But, you know, we grab this up soon enough so that we can be on the ballot in the event. So that was the, that was the goal.
Yeah. Is the ballot going to be six pages?
There may be, there might be two ballots.
Might be two.
But I, we've talked with the, with the new printer of the ballots and they seem to think that they can handle our 31-seat ballot plus, plus, uh, the questions. All right, great.
Motion to adjourn.
Adjourn. All right. All in favor? Let's go. Thank you.
Is somebody going to get Alice home?
Dick. We'll, we'll shove a nerve.